To the March twentieth, twenty twenty-three Regular Board Meeting of the Beacon City School District, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it is one nation under God.
Matt, can you review the fire exits, please?
Yes, exits are in the back of the LGI.
Thank you. Oh, please stand again for a moment of silence for Pocahontas Jackson, DCSD Retired School Bus Monitor. Thank you. And before we get going, I also want to acknowledge the resignation of Antoni Tseng. He was, he started actually with me on the board in twenty sixteen, and he decided to resign before the end of his term because he was able to get an opportunity to continue his education towards, he's already an EMT, but towards furthering his education as an EMT. And classes started tonight, so he was not able to be here. But I just wanted to recognize him and thank him for his service. He was really deeply, deeply involved with the board in a very tumultuous time at the beginning, and he was very dedicated to his work on the Diversity Committee and the Policy Committee, which he chaired several, for several years. So, thank you, Antoni. Also, we have other, some more happy news tonight. We are meeting our valedictorian and our salutatorian, Lila Quinn and Shepard Rogers. Do you guys want to come up to the podium and say hello? You don't have to say anything, we can, we just look at you. But if you do want to say something, you're welcome.
I think Cory's, Cory's gonna introduce them.
You can start working on your graduation speeches.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Cory has a.
The principal's gonna.
Yeah, yeah, it's not up to you, sorry.
Stand there while I say like nice things about you. All right, good evening, everyone. So it is my privilege to introduce to the board the Beacon High School Class of Twenty Twenty-three Valedictorian and Salutatorian. These are two remarkable students, each with cumulative GPAs well into the one hundreds, who have made an indelible impression on the teachers, counselors, advisors, and administrators, some of whom are here today, who have gotten to know them over the course of their time in our district. It's my pleasure to announce that Lila Quinn is the Class of Twenty Twenty-three Valedictorian and Shepard Rogers. And Shepard Rogers is the Class of Twenty Twenty-three Salutatorian. Interesting story here, for those of you that don't know, but Lila's parents and Shepard's parents have been friends since before Lila and Shepard were born. And both Lila and Shepard have twin siblings here at the high school. Lila's brother Henry and Shepard's sister Ruby, Ruby, I think I saw Henry come in, Henry's over there. Ruby is on a college tour right now with her dad. Henry and Ruby are each exceptional students in their own right. Henry has a cumulative GPA of over ninety-five, and Ruby is graduating with a GPA of over one hundred and one. So Lila, Henry, Shepard, and Ruby have been friends their whole lives. Now, this is a really special time for all of them and for their families. Lila and Shepard, over the next few months, as you make your college decision and prepare for this exciting new chapter in your life, know that you go forward with the support and admiration of our Beacon High School community. The hard work, dedication, and leadership that you have shown over the years is precisely what students should aspire towards. We hope that you are as proud of yourselves as we are of you, and we look forward to hearing from you on June twenty-second. Congratulations.
Congratulations again, you guys. Oh, I'm sorry. Vicki, do you mind doing the roll call?
Ms. Flynn?
Here.
Mr. Galloway?
Excused.
Ms. Here?
Here.
Ms. Push?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Excused.
Ms. Here.
Here. Thank you, Vicki, for reminding me. Okay, open to the public. I think, Dennis, you signed up for open to the public, would you like to?
How do you call that?
I noticed it as I was walking by the podium.
Dennis Pavlock, I have some different kind of comments tonight, and if I may, I'd like to ask this audience behind me and the board in front of me, does anybody know the nickname of Suicide? Suicide Street name? Does anybody know that name? You can just shout it out if you know it. Does anybody know that name? They call it the Silent Killer because nobody knows actually when it's gonna happen or who's gonna commit it. What if I told you tonight, me standing here tonight, I have a ninety to ninety-five percent...
Dennis, I'm just gonna ask you to address the board, please. Thank you.
What if I told you tonight I had a ninety to ninety-five percent reduction in that to find out and to know the signs for that? Let me read that to you. If you were to pose these questions to students, number one is, in the past few weeks, have you wished you were dead? Number one. Number two, have you felt you or your family would be better off dead? Number two. Number three, have you had thoughts of killing yourself? Number three. Number four, have you ever tried to kill yourself? With ninety-five percent accuracy, researchers and the experts say that if a student does not answer one of these questions, you need to watch out for the student, you need to get the student some more assistance. Because on the TV, a few, a few shows, this is why I was watching it, and it came about when a couple of students, sports students in high school, it got a little bit much, and one student, she walked into the Mississippi River and kept going, so she drowned herself because it got too much for her. So, if you want these questions, again, Mr. Matt Lindell, you got my number, I'd like to come down and have a meeting with you, and I want you, I'd like to have this posed to the, run this past through the, through the district, and hopefully we can save somebody's life. Thank you much for your time.
Thank you, Dennis. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment?
So, since July fourth, twenty twenty-one, I have been emailing both the school superintendent and president of the Board of Education about the importance of including Muslim holidays on the school calendar. Each time I have, each time I've tried to convince them, I've received excuses. The first time, what I received was that the calendar was already made, which I fully understand. My issue comes after that, when I was told that since Il Fiddir and Il Atha don't fall on school days, they are less of priority to discuss than snow days and heat days, although I barely remember having any heat days in my, my twelve years going to this district. Also, Il Fiddir does fall on a school day this year, meaning that students are going to have to either choose between their education or their religion, both of which should be a right. Another thing that I continue, that I discussed with the president of the Board of Education is the ignorance in our district about, about Muslim holidays and their importance. Since second grade, we have been taught the importance of including and celebrating other holidays for other religions, but you don't hear anything about Islam until your freshman year of high school. I was promised that this would change almost two years ago, and all I got was a Happy Ramadan on the announcements, and that's it. I'm not asking for a change in the curriculum in our school, I am just asking for some recognition for our religion and our holidays. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Ken, do you, do you mind just stating your name?
Sarah Lynch-Afar.
Sarah Lynch, thank you. I, I know it's hard to speak publicly, I appreciate you coming.
I wanna speak, so.
Are there any other public comments?
I'm a BOCES candidate, so I work for the, wait for the workshop?
Uh, if you don't mind, are you Michael Reel? Yeah, I think you're the only one here, but I just wanna.
No. That's fine, yeah, I understand, it wasn't you.
Oh, hi, how are you? Yeah, just wait for the workshop then, thank you. Okay, so seeing no other public comments?
I have one. Can I?
Yes, please.
Listen, I don't have any prepared words or anything, but I just wanna let you know, I've been working in this district for, I don't know, over two decades or more, and I've had many students come in front of me, and I fell in love with each and every one, but these two, oh, my goodness, my heart, you guys are awesome, and you come from awesome families, who I love your brother and your sisters, too, and I'm telling you what, Beacon, if you don't know, we've got an incredible student body. This is just the top of the top, but we've got so many awesome students. So if you ever doubt it, just look around, we got some right here, we got some back here, and I just wanna say that you guys did an awesome job rising to the top. It's not easy, because there's a lot of awesome people, awesome students in this building, okay? Just wanna say that. Look at us. All right, have a great night.
Thank you, Ms. Luke.
Just before we get into the workshop, too, I just wanted to thank you for your public comment. We are trying to put the finishing touches on next year's calendar. We have, we have a lot of things we're trying to do with the calendar. We are trying to incorporate holidays into it, Muslim, a Muslim holiday into it. We have maybe, possibly a conflict with state testing, I'm trying to figure that out, I've been doing a little research into that. But beyond that, we need to do better just with educating our staff, too. So, thank you for coming back and, and sharing that, and, and we're working on it, so thank you.
And one other comment regarding that, Matt made me aware today that there was a conflict with the state testing.
This is twenty twenty-four we're talking about.
Twenty twenty-four. And I think that I would like to ask our board if we would put a resolution forward to the state to recognize and to make their schedule, because it is, I mean, it would be great if this was done at the state level in general, but it is a district choice, the calendar right now, but it is really hard to compete with state dates that they've put down to us. So if we can at least make sure that the calendar is clear for us to make those decisions, that would be helpful for us. So I'm gonna ask our, we have a PR committee, and we put resolutions to the state level, or to our School Boards Association every year, and maybe it'll be advocated for at the state level.
Thank you.
Okay, we have three workshops tonight. Our first is our BOCES Board Candidate Workshop, and we have Michael Reel, and I'm gonna mispronounce your name, Anquinet, is that right? Hales? Okay. So I'm gonna ask you both to come up, and you can each make a short statement if you want, and then I was gonna open it to questions from the board.
Do you want one to come and then the other?
You can, we can go alphabet, yeah, why don't we go alphabetical order, so Anquinet first.
My name is Anquinet Hales, and I just want to congratulate you all on the wonderful job that you are doing for the families and students of the Beacon City School District. So I am a candidate for the BOCES Board. You all should have received my candidate letter, but just a couple of highlights, I am a resident of the city of Poughkeepsie, I'm a graduate of Poughkeepsie High School, I am also a graduate of the BOCES program. I graduated from their New Visions program. I went on to do my undergraduate work at University of Albany and my graduate work at Fordham University. I'm also an adjunct at Duchess Community College, and I work as a consultant throughout New York State, so we won't get in, get into that. But I am particularly interested in continuing the work that the board has already established. I am interested in building bridges, and I'm also interested in championing higher education as well as technical education. I know that sometimes there is a lot of mysticism around the technical certificates, but it is my hope to continue to provide a place for our students within the BOCES system, continue to build those bridges and strengthen those bonds, so that students understand that, yes, you can get a college degree, but you can also get a certification, which I also own myself. So, that's my spiel. I thank you all for your time, for allowing me to come and introduce myself, and I look forward to serving your students on the BOCES Board.
Thank you, thanks for making the time. Are there any questions for Anquinet?
What did you study at BOCES?
I did their New Visions Health Program. So I did a first, my first semester, and I decided that being in the health career was not for me, but it did broaden my horizons. And within the New Visions program, I was able to go into the hospitals, I was able to see my first labor and delivery, I was able to see my first knee replacement, I think at the time they were first introducing the scope in this area, and so I can go on and on about just my experience. It was wonderful, and I feel like it helped me solidify that I wanted to work with people, just not in the capacity of healthcare.
Are there any particular goals you have for your time on the BOCES Board, if you're elected?
Yes, I am interested in bringing more technological career fields to the area, especially AI. I have a love and passion for technology, and I do wanna see our students advance in those particular areas and really keep them ahead of the curve. There are so many areas that have already started piloting different programs, and so I hope that we can start conversation and maybe even build a small program around a lot of the, the things that are happening. We wanna stay ahead, we definitely wanna stay ahead in this area, so.
Yeah. Well, hopefully the capital project just being finished will give you the facilities to, to do that work.
Yes, absolutely. And the capital project, I mean, the campus looks beautiful, and again, it's just all about giving our students that edge, you know, an opportunity, so.
Yeah.
As a BOCES Board, oh, I'm sorry. As a BOCES Board member, you have to deal with thirteen different interests from thirteen different components, how do you plan to do that?
Yeah, so thirteen different interests, really just kind of finding a middle ground and making sure that our programming is covering all of what the thirteen districts seek to do within their student bodies. So I know that it's not going to please everyone, but hopefully, again, getting to some middle ground and offering programming that's going to hopefully suit everyone.
Great.
Just curious, what made you decide to run?
What made me decide to run? So I was actually approached a few years ago, when I came back to the area, and at the time, I had twin girls, and they were a bit young, and so now that they are entering into the school district, I think it is my duty to give back in a way that sets a foundation for them as they grow older in the districts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A lot of twin moms in the room tonight.
Really, really? Yes, yes. So yes, my girls are, they're, they're going into kindergarten this year, and so, again, having a little bit more time to dedicate to.
Just a little.
Just a little, just a little more time to dedicate to, again, building some solid foundations for hopefully them when they are ready to enter into the system.
Well, I would think that coming from BOCES would give you a really interesting point of view.
I think so, too. So, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much, thanks for coming.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for the invitation. My name is Michael Reel, I'm a resident here in Beacon and have been for almost fifty years. My three children graduated from Beacon High School and did very well, two salutatorians out of that three. And my daughter, who wasn't quite salutatorian, went to New Visions, and she got, recently got her doctorate in, in physical therapy, so she followed through in our New Visions, and that's her lifetime now. My, my background is, I'm retired Assistant Superintendent for Business for over thirty years in various school districts, including a BOCES down south. I got into BOCES after being on the Beacon Board. My, my children graduated, oh, it was time to move on, and I got asked to run for the Beacon Board quite a few years ago, and I'm still there. This year, I was voted President of the Board, and I enjoy working with the Beacon, I mean, the BOCES Board and all the boards, but, but I don't see, we don't see the Board very often, and we don't hear from you directly usually, unless there's a problem, which we hope we don't have, but we respond to your service requests. You know, we don't know what you need until you tell us. We, we put out a general service request to sell our services, so to speak, to all of our districts. And when we have a, a collection of requests that are viable enough in order to offer the program, that's what we do, unless the state tells us we can't. Sometimes that happens, but right now, all of our classrooms are, are being utilized, we don't have open classrooms. And so, we have programs we currently have, and we'll devise them from time to time, but it's hard to knock a program out that's being successful and being utilized. So it's hard sometimes to create new programs. What we're finding, we're doing is integrating new programs into current programs, so that we're not blocking kids away from what they heard they wanna do, but trying to expand it into other things that other students may wanna do. It's that combination that keeps our staff very, very busy. You know, our goals are to, to have a welcoming environment, and how do we do that? We want our students to obtain the best that they can, because they're not our students, they're your students. And how do we do that? Well, thanks to, thanks to you all, we have a new building now, and it really, really makes a difference, I think, because the kids and the staff are more enthusiastic about getting to work and going to school. The other part of that is, well, you know, it's hard sometimes, as you probably know, to get and maintain staff, so we're working very hard always to get and maintain staff. You know, it's, it's difficult sometimes to find a, a bricklayer that's gonna teach instead of lay bricks, because that's what our students want. That's a difficult task. We have a very active personnel department that's always working, looking for staff, always. So if you know people wanna work for BOCES, please send them, because even if we don't have an opening then, we put them on the list because you never know when that mason's gonna get sick or leave, because you got a job down south. So it's, it's those kind of things that make it difficult, but at the same time, make it challenging. I think we, we do a good job, we try very hard to do a good job, and we encourage our staff to make sure that they have a welcoming environment and a welcoming tone to all of our students, so they can achieve their best. You know, my motto is, students first, always think of the student first. And, and in that way, when you go into that classroom, or, or whether you're a cook on the line or a janitor, if, if what you're doing is important to keep that school running at tip-top condition, do it, because it's student first. And I think we, we have a good staff, and, and they do very good in trying to keep that motto ahead. Questions?
What years were you a board member in Beacon?
I was here when, when we built this building, I, it was a while ago, and I was on for a while. I was here when we, when we signed the lease to have the Duchess Stadium built, and I was, I was on the board when this building was built.
Great.
So it's been a while, but a good while and a good time, you know? It was while I was working down south, and now I'm retired, but I, I still enjoy working and, and being on the BOCES Board, because it encourages me to say, boy, our students, countywide, not just Beacon, countywide, are really enthusiastic about coming here. You can see it, you can hear them when, when they come in, and, and I, I'm not there during the day, but at graduation, and, and sometimes we see them at, at fairs or, or something, and they're competing in, across the county, and they, or across the state sometimes, they're doing very well.
Any other questions?
Yep.
I, I, I respectfully thank you, and I, I'm looking for your support and endorsement, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, thanks so much for coming.
Thanks, Mike.
One more thing, April fifteenth, all the board is invited to our open house, it's a Saturday, nine-thirty, if you come to ribbon cutting, you'll be impressed. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, our second workshop is, we're gonna hear from our Director of Facilities, Jesse Morell.
Hi, everyone, my name's Jesse Morell, Director of Facilities. First, I wanna go over some of the goals and priorities for the department, and then followed by some of the budget details for the upcoming year. I'm looking at four different areas of focus for the department, one being compliance, basically what are our regulatory obligations, where are we with those, and what, what changes are on the horizon, preventative maintenance, it's, it's an approach to managing facilities and operations, staff development and conservation. What can we do to be more environmentally responsible as a department and as a district? One of our regulations, starting in two thousand and sixteen, the state required all water outlets that are or could potentially be used for drinking water to be tested for lead. This may have been, I believe it was the, the first state in the, in the country to do this. They established an action level of fifteen parts per billion, and at that point, if, if you exceeded that, you had to take some action with the outlet, take it out of service, change it, you know, try to, try to troubleshoot what, what could be contributing to that. That went through two cycles, and it was on a five-year schedule, it's been reduced to a three-year schedule, and they dropped the action level to one-third of what it previously was. So what we're doing in anticipation of that is putting local filtration on certain of our critical outlets, like in our, in our kitchens, in our water fountains, you know, just in anticipation of this much lower level, because it's really a mystery to everyone how that's gonna turn out for all the districts. Another regulation is, is our petroleum bulk storage requirements. Back in, when we built this building, SED required dual fuel for our heating systems. In this case, it was gas and an underground fuel oil tank. So the high school has a ten-thousand gallon underground fuel oil tank, and we're about, you know, the twenty, twenty or so years. Because of that quantity and the fact that it's underground, DEC requires it to be registered. And there's certain other things that, that go along with that, regular inspections, fuel monitoring, and things like that. Because of the age of, of the tank and the fact that that's no longer being enforced by SED, they're not requiring the dual fuel. In, in the future, we may want to look at removing this, which would eliminate this requirement and these additional obligations for the, for the district. Another one we have is the, is acronym's AHR, Asbestos Hiders Emergency Response Act. Basically, it requires all districts in New York State to have an inventory of all of their known or suspected asbestos-containing material and a plan to manage them. You know, if it's, if it's damaged or, or could likely be damaged, it had to have been removed, and, and there's a requirement that you monitor the stuff that remains, to make sure that, you know, it doesn't start to degrade. There are some pretty stringent requirements, there's a triennial inspection that, that has to be done by a certified inspector over three years, the district has to do six-month surveillance inspections of all that material, they have to, someone has to be designated person for the district, and there's also staff training that's required for that. Currently, we're working with Quest to, to get our district plan in order. There is gonna be some additional staff training that we, that we're gonna implement once we have that in hand, to make sure we're in full compliance with this, this requirement. You know, fire safety regulations, the, you know, the state, this has been a requirement for a very long time. There's an annual fire inspection of all school buildings, it's on an eleven-month cycle. What we're doing is more regularly inspecting all of our, our building fire safety features from, you know, our sprinkler systems, our, even our fire doors and things like that, just get that on more of a routine, and just sort of educate people on how to, how to keep. just get that on more of a routine, and just sort of educate people on how to keep our buildings as safely, safe as we can. One of the big things, priorities for the department was to no longer use utility areas as storage areas, which is common, you know, in many school buildings. And finally, there is, because we have cooling towers, we're required to register those cooling towers. It's a New York State requirement, and the point of it is to prevent the growth of Legionella bacteria. So there is a maintenance and inspection plan required of that, and a 90-day reporting, which the district is obligated to do every 90 days that the system is in operation. So for our preventative maintenance strategy, really, it's an approach that is more proactive than reactive. It's regular and systematic. What you see on the right is a snapshot of the software that we're beginning to use that works in conjunction with our work ticket program, so we can identify our different building assets and develop a preventative maintenance schedule, and it will automatically generate work tickets for the maintenance group. So what does a preventative maintenance program do for the district? Above all, it protects the investment in school facilities. Over time, it reduces the frequency of emergency repairs, improves the building comfort, increases system efficiency, and can decrease utility costs. A common figure used is three to four times more expensive to wait on system failure, to fail to do the preventative maintenance. And the reason for that is, you're in a situation where you have to expedite parts, often pay overtime, and contract with outside companies when we are in a position where we need the service immediately. Failure to do the preventative maintenance also leads to premature system failures and just a general uneven system performance throughout all of our facilities. So what's involved? It begins with identifying all the assets. You know, what pieces of equipment are in our facilities? And then each one of those different types of equipment, there needs to be a maintenance schedule developed for each one of those. And then you have to develop a schedule for all those different tasks to show up as work orders. In addition to that, it's routine equipment inspections, getting eyes on all of our systems to see if there's any changes before there's a catastrophic failure. So, you know, it's more than just performing physical tasks on the equipment, it's also performing inspections. You know, the more times we can, we can look and listen at our different pieces of critical equipment, you know, the more we're able to anticipate failures before we, they occur. So the benefits of a program like this, or an approach like this, develops over time. And there's a transition period where you're doing both. You're responding to failures. At the same time, you know, you're being proactive, and it will, it will be more challenging during that transition period until you can fully implement a, you know, preventative maintenance program. But at the same time, it's still critical that we prepare for system breakdowns. So in an emergency, we need to be able to act quickly to get the resources we need in to make those corrections. So what we, what we're doing for this upcoming year is taking five of our most large construction trades and putting them out to RFQ. So we have them, we've already negotiated what our price is going to be, what the terms are, what the response time will be. And this is already predetermined, so we're not trying to do this in an emergency situation when we're dealing with equipment failure. So, you know, we know we're going to get the best price we can, we possibly can for that work, and we know what to expect from those contractors. So as far as departmental capacity, we want to expand our, what we're able to do with in-house staff where it's smart. You know, obviously, we don't want to invest in equipment that we can't get the full use out of. In those cases, it does pay to use outside contractors. But with smart investments in equipment and staff training, we can reduce the need for, you know, oftentimes costly outside contractors. We're also doing what I'm calling a weekend on-call maintenance worker. So if we have an emergency over the weekend, we have equipment failure, we're not needing to turn to a contractor necessarily. You know, we're able to do it with our in-house staff. All right, and so conservation, I looked at two, I basically put it in two different buckets. New investments, these are usually our, our big things that take years to develop, like our EV bus initiatives and, you know, our bus wash plants to conserve more water. And then there's smaller things that we can do more often, and, you know, with our in-house They can be just improving the performance of some of our existing equipment. A couple examples would be the LED lights out in the parking lot here. We went from metal halide light to LED lights, and they use 75% less energy than the metal halide lights. You know, we also took some initiatives at South to reduce the amount of water consumed by the, by the steam heating system. And at the high school, we corrected a water leak that was costing us not only water, but more gas than we needed to be spending on. There is a couple of other areas where we can look at. Eliminating our gasoline and engine vehicles. There's now commercial lines of electric zero-turn mowers. I requested a demo from one of the commercial providers to see if it could suit our needs. So when our equipment is due to be replaced, we can look at these battery alternatives. There's even now a commercial van that's electric-powered, and it can be, you know, purchased today. We looked into it briefly and found that, you know, it's available, but it's at retail. It's not on a state contract or anything like that. But that, you know, I suspect that that will not be too far away. The post office has already ordered over 9,000 of these vehicles. So when, you know, we have one of our old trucks that's, you know, there's one that we use for a delivery vehicle, something like this would be a great substitute for Okay, so let's look at some of the budget details here. Our BOCs line went up about 3%, and that's our, that's our health and safety coaster. And our, they provide an elevator inspection service for us. That amounts to about $4,000 a year increase. Material supplies, I don't think it'd be a surprise to anybody, the cost of all this stuff has gone up. Our contractual is about the same as the previous year, same with equipment. Our salaries did increase somewhat in the latest contract. And as you can see, compared to last year, we see material and salaries are consuming just a slight more percentage of the total departmental budget.
That's impressive management, since inflation's been significant.
So any questions?
Yeah. On the lead contamination, we've had some testing programs. What kind of results have we been seeing?
I did a lot of testing for other districts in my previous employment, and it is very similar to what I found in other districts. You know, there's 5%, 10% will exceed that action level. But at this lower level, it's uncharted territory. So, you know, we're going to do everything we can to make sure there's no, there's no big disturbances or interruption in normal building activity.
So this is drinking fountains, but also some kitchen?
Yes. Anything that is or could potentially be used for consumption. So kitchen outlets, water fountains, bathroom sinks, unless they're tempered outlets, you know, like hands-free type things that blend the hot and the cold together, those are not part of this testing regime.
Are we seeing any particular hotspots that need to be shut down or taken out of service? I remember years ago, there were situations like that.
Yeah, that's the immediate response. When you have an exceedance of the action level, you take it out of service. You know, it's still going to be used for hand washing legally. So until you, until some other solution's found.
Over the last few years, we've, we've made a pretty steady move towards the bottle filling stations.
Yes.
And those have a filter in them?
They come with a lead filter.
Right. So they're, they're in every school? Are they in every school? I can't remember.
We have at least one in every, every school building. They're, they're...
Does the high, the high school has just one, or?
Multiple.
Multiple.
Yeah.
Ronbaut has multiple?
We have, we had it on the agenda to buy right before COVID happened, and then we couldn't get them, so we're still trying to migrate into that. So when the water fountain's to be replaced, we're going to do it with the bottle filler.
Right. But it seems like, seems like students are really using the bottle filling stations more than anything else, right? So I guess I'm just saying, Craig, those come with a built-in filter. I think sometimes when we see elevated levels, like with the sink, or, you know, something like that, not always, but oftentimes that's what we see.
Right, sometimes it's with the fixtures, sometime, it could be with an old, you know, like soldering in the building.
Or I should say an action level.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions? Nope.
This is really great. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Jesse. And thank you for all the proactive work. It's, I think that that's going to really pay off for us.
Yeah.
Do we have any?
Would you like me to start without you?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I don't want to...
So we're moving onto our budget.
I'll just run the whole thing and see what happens, right?
We're moving into our budget workshop. We're going to start with Ann Marie Cordero.
Okay. Actually, my slides are first anyway, so that could work that way. So Matt and I, with the help of Perry, because once we get to the EV buses, I wanted to just give the board an update of where we are with certain things in the budget and what we're going to propose to put on the ballot in May. So just a couple of highlights on the budget side. Our final tax cap for the 2324 budget is the 3.64%, and during the final budget presentations, I'll get into a little bit more detail on how we calculated that. So it's an increase of a little over $1.6 million from last year's budget to this year's budget. Our state aid, our foundation aid increased by 3%. That was the minimum amount per the governor's budget. What I've read with both the Senate and Assembly is that they're both in agreement with Governor Hochul, so it looks like the state aid number would probably stay what it is presented right now. Our pre-K allotment, we had an increase of $127,020. That is specifically for 20 additional slots. So as you remember, last year, we were able to have a full-day pre-K program. We had two classes in Gallenham and one in each of the other three elementaries. So with 20 additional slots, it makes it interesting. We've had a huge outcry, and I'll talk a minute about opening registration for pre-K. We've had a lot of parents reaching out for us. We have the ability to run an additional class at Sargent and the room there, so we are going to open up registration, see how it goes, and see on the utilization of the sixth class for pre-K. And again, the New York State Senate and Assembly in both of their budget propositions are including universal school meals, so I thought that was an important piece. I know it was not in Governor Hochul's, but it is in both of theirs. I know there's a Robbie for that, so we're really hoping that that kind of moves forward. A little bit more about pre-K. So again, we received $127,000 for 20 additional slots. Online registration will begin on Wednesday, March 22nd. We just got the approval today to put the link up, so it would be online registration. We will have a lottery, and parents will be notified on or just later than April 14th. So in the past, we did first come, first served. We're not finding that that is probably the fairest way to do it. So we are going to do a lottery by school, and then, then kind of utilize the two additional classes that we have at the two other elementary schools. As part of the pre-K grant, we still utilize our community-based organizations. There's a percentage of the grant that needs to go to them, so there will be our students in their programs. But this year, we ended up having more go out to community-based, because we were full and we ran out of space. So if we do decide to open up the sixth class, we might be able to utilize some and have children in their home schools. And then, again, we'll evaluate the need once the lottery is drawn to see how we can move forward with that. So we have our information on the board agenda tonight for the legal notices, but we are, this is our plan for what will appear on the ballot this year. So obviously, the first would be the budget proposition. We're going to do our normal bus proposition, so we're going to ask for two buses and three vans around, again, the total being $500,000 to finance over five years to match the state aid. We are going to put up an electric bus proposition, and we have a proposition to reduce the mileage for eligibility for the, for bus transportation for students in the Beacon City School District.
And just to lay out, next board meeting, we didn't quite line this up perfectly, but next board meeting, you know, Deb, we'll do a transportation budget presentation. We'll also do a PPS budget presentation and a professional development budget presentation next week. But, but, you know, we needed to get the ballot propositions discussed tonight. So, you know, we'll still be talking about the rest of transportation next week. We wanted to start, you know, get this conversation going tonight, just to be clear about that. Sorry.
That's okay. So our, so our EV bus proposition will look a little bit different than our traditional bus propositions. So we're asking the taxpayers to vote on this purchase. Our plan is to purchase one EV bus with a charger to just kind of get started towards the mandate that is coming down the road a few years from now. The wording of this proposition will be conditional, meaning that we are, we are asking the taxpayers to vote on the proposition on a bus as long as we get X amount of money in grant money, so that it can offset the cost. Because the cost of an EV bus is significantly higher than it would be for a bus that we normally put on a proposition. There is funding available. We did a big push to investigate the first source of grant funding. That was actually specific to certain buses in 2009, 2010, and we were not eligible for that specific pot of money at the moment. So we are, you know, Perry's been really instrumental in working with Tetra Tech. We have a, we have a meeting this week with Nicerda?
Central Hudson.
Central Hudson.
Central Hudson on the bus fleet program, which helps us to better understand our energy usage, or what our fleet usage will be as we electrify. So that is coming to a meeting on Wednesday, and we'll get a report back. Debbie has been great at providing all the information on her routes and how the buses are used, so that...
So that is to start projecting as to what will our fleet look like as we move it to electric and what will the needs be for the electrification.
So we felt that wording this bus proposition, so it gives, it gives the district the authority to purchase an EV bus, but it has limitations. So it's not something that we're going to go out there and purchase if we don't have some of the grant money to kind of subsidize the, the total cost of it. And this is on the fourth proposition. I, I know Debbie will take, will talk a little bit about this next week. The goal of lowering the mileage requirement is to encourage better attendance in school. So in some, in some parts of the district, a student may not be eligible. They might be just over the mile and a half or just at the mile and a half, and they're not getting on a bus, which is making them extremely difficult for them to get to school. So we did a very preliminary count, and again, we're going to look at it again, but this shows the additional students that would be eligible to ride the bus. And, and I think, as you know, I've heard it a lot of times while I'm working here, that most people say, well, the buses are not full. You know, they're not, so we were able to incorporate some of the students on buses and on routes that are already, are occurring within the district. We speak sometimes about an allowable pupil decimal, which means you have to let children on a bus that are required based on your, on your policy, which is a mile and a half. So we do have special requests from parents to have their students ride, or if they have to cross 9W, or there's, it's a safety issue, they're riding. But because they don't live more than a mile and a half, we're not really getting the credit for them on the transportation aid. So it's really advantageous to reduce it to a mile. It's not going to cost us any more money. We won't have to put any more routes in, but it will give us the eligibility to, to generate a little bit more transportation aid, because then those students would also be allowable based on the formula.
We, we wanted to do this for this year. I think I've shared that. I, I actually didn't realize that it was something that required a vote. So we're really excited to get it on the ballot this year.
Okay.
What questions do you all have?
I have a comment. I like the idea about the conditional part of the ballot, because not only is it controlling the financial risk and helping get the propositions passed, but it also sends a message to anybody that we can forward it to that this is a big concern of ours, and I think this is an effective way to do that.
And just to remind folks, the, we're required to, all, the fleets need to be fully converted by 2035. All purchases need to be all electric by 2027. So there's probably a couple of handfuls of districts starting this, this year in, in New York State. My assumption is there'll be a lot more next year. So, and I just want to reiterate, Perry and Ann Marie have been very instrumental. There's been a lot of meetings and, and work that's gone into just getting that proposition on there and doing all the legwork. Central Hudson has done their study, right, of the, the power grid part of it. We're having a meeting with them on Wednesday this week. It's, it's an incredible process to begin this transition, and you know, you both have been really tireless with this, so thank you.
Thank you all so much.
With the EV buses, you said that it's conditional upon receiving grant money. Like, how much are we looking for? 50%, 60%, 100%?
So we're looking for, I think the, the buses with the charger runs about $460,000. So we were looking for $250,000 in grant. So trying to make it as close to what a large gas bus would be. It would be a little bit more, obviously, because the charger is in there. And again, we would do the same way. We would finance it over five years to match the transportation. So we're trying to get in the ballpark of having a regular bus and not making it really hard for, for us to actually pay for it.
Also in the ballpark of what the grants are offering.
Right. So 250 was the grant, right?
Yeah, that was a truck voucher grant, was a program that was very popular. And it's, it's just run out, and then we're waiting for everything to be reset. Actually, with the truck voucher grant, it requires mandates that for every bus that you bring in, you have to take a bus out of service. We don't have a bus that fits the criteria necessary to be able to take it out of service yet. We're still working on that, and that may, may come along. There are other, EPA also has other grant programs that also are waiting for, for them to be refunded so that those programs can open back up. We expect some of that to, to happen here in the spring.
And the meeting on Wednesday with Central Hudson, that, is that going to be like a cost analysis as to what would be projected the cost for this one bus or for our whole fleet?
So it is actually for the whole fleet. We, we, and I use Debbie, Debbie's really been the one that's gathered much of this information. We provided them all of our statistics as to how many miles does a bus run? How long we own each bus? What, how much time the bus is down in between, or the dwell time between, between runs? So that they can start to look at, there's decisions to be made in every bus that we would purchase as to what type of battery configuration it has, what type of a charger configuration, whether it's a fast charge, slow charge. And these all have economic impacts as well. So it's really trying to put a whole program together as to how you're going to electrify, electrify your entire fleet.
And would there be a comparison with that to what we currently spend on, like, gas and stuff?
There, there is some comparison there. I don't know, quite frankly, I haven't, this is, we're, we're ahead of the curve. There aren't too many districts out there yet that have done this process, so end of the day Wednesday, I'll have more information for you.
Cool.
One of the issues that has come up with electric vehicles is heating in cold climates like ours. So I assume your research is looking into that and what options that are available on different equipment?
So, so the, the, and it's all new. So part of it is, we don't have a lot of information to work with, but generally, they say that there's about a 10% reduction in travel in cold weather or warm weather if you have air conditioning. And then there also can be a 10% reduction based on geographics. Yeah, so that's why I, I think we're going in the right direction, bringing in one, if we can get one bus, get it in the fleet, literally use as a test on every route and every weather condition you can, and start to track that information to see what impact that has on its performance.
It's a guinea pig bus.
It's a guinea pig. It's, we call it the toe in the water. It's a matter of just, just getting in, getting started. You've got to start somewhere, and you have to be there by 2035 anyway, so.
I wouldn't be surprised if they push that off after reality takes a bite, but it's good to be planning.
I've been in meetings with, with government agencies that, that agree that it will probably be extended, but you're going to have much better shot at getting an extension if you show you've had good faith at trying to get there in the first place. Those who wait to the last minute and try to do it may not fare so well.
And we are hearing from the governor's office that we're required to submit a plan on this.
That's in the governor's, yeah. That's in the governor's proposal.
So it hasn't been passed yet.
But some of the state and assembly kind of agree with her, so it might happen.
So we wanted to make sure this information got in front of you tonight. For, you know, our ballot is going to look a little different this year. So we're also realizing that education and communication will be really key to this. So, you know, we'll, we'll put more information in the flyer. We'll probably do for sure some in-person meetings and probably some virtual meetings for the community, just to explain the ballot. Because it just, you know, it's, it's not going to be the typical things that we're voting on.
Well, the interesting part is with the universal food lunch, that, that the Senate and legislation went towards that, right? And they're going to fund that. If they could do it for lunch, they should be able to do it for pre-K.
Actually, one of them does talk about the additional funding for, I don't remember if it's Senator or Assembly, but they're talking about upping the amount.
I mean, it's nice that they gave more money, but like, some schools don't have the room for the additional slots.
I mean, I think Beacon's extremely lucky. We've had a pre-K program for many years, so it hasn't been hard to actually start it. But I know that some of my colleagues in Duchess County are really struggling. Space is an issue. Actually, starting the whole program is an issue because they're only funding a portion of it. So a lot of them are using their CBOs, so they're, they're just putting them out into the community and not having anything in-house. So we're lucky enough to have the pre-Kers in our building as well. So I think that's important.
A question on the universal lunch. In your report, what would be the metric? I mean, in terms of money, if we're fully funded for a universal lunch? Would it make a difference to us in terms of dollars here, or what?
So I, what I can tell you is that school lunch has really suffered financially before it was universal meals. And, and the general fund does transfer money to help pay for certain things. The two, the two or three years where we were getting it fully funded, all the school districts actually had a huge fund balance, which we got a letter for, and we had to have a, a plan on how to bring it down to only three months' worth of expenses. So you saw a swing completely the other way. So financially, it's, it's very advantageous for school lunch to be funded that way. And also for the general fund, so we wouldn't have to transfer money to pay for some of the expenses.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alejandro, you're the, you're our sole student school board advisor here tonight. How are you?
I'm good.
Do you have any comments that you wanted to share?
No, not right now.
Thanks for being here. Reviewing the agenda, currently there are no additions to note. So can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual and to discuss attorney-client advice? And the board will return in about 15 minutes. Can I have a motion? Motion by Anthony, second by Eunice. All in favor? Or any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also in favor. Passes, what are we, six? Six to zero. Thank you.
For your patience. But we could do your report first, Matt, and then-
Okay.
Oh, that. Yeah. Okay, so do I have to wave the? You have my chair. I'm not ready for this. Why does it keep going down? Yeah, I think it's over time. It just slides down. Like, I feel tall. Down there, people need to talk about it. I have a motion to vote separately on 12.01A1.
So moved.
Kristen, second by Alina. Thank you. This is the, I'm sorry, nothing's coming up fast here. This is to confer tenure to Joseph Genjulis in the area of Teaching Assistant. Are there any comments or questions?
Congratulations.
Many congratulations to you. Thank you so much for your- We have to vote first. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also in favor. Passes six to zero. Congratulations. Thank you for waiting.
And no judgment if you-
Yeah, if you want to. Feel like you have to stay. Just us. We also have one addition to the agenda tonight, to the consent agenda. It will be 15.11. Resolution, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Beacon City School District hereby affirms the superintendent's decision and suspension of student number 11670 issued pursuant to an education law, number 3214, superintendent's hearing. And further authorizes the board president to inform the parents of student number 11670 of its decision. Okay.
Go ahead.
So back to the regular order of the agenda, we will have the superintendent's report.
Do we need to vote on adding that to the agenda? Oh, okay.
Do we need to vote to add it to the agenda?
Yes.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to add 15.11 to the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Alina. Second by Craig. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also in favor. Passes six to zero. Thank you. Okay. Superintendent's report.
I just have a few quick things to update everyone on. I have an email that will be going out to the community tomorrow with some of this information. We have one last superintendent community conversation. It's going to be at South Avenue, and it's going to be Wednesday, March 29, at 7 o'clock. And so that's a, just a scheduling thing. It's been really great getting around and talking to folks about all the cool work that we have planned or happening right now. Just a calendar update for our current year's calendar, because I'd like to say it's because of my amazing management of snow days, but it was really more that it didn't snow that much. But we do have a give-back day, and according to the calendar that was adopted for this year, that will be Monday, April 10. So spring break has been extended for a day, so everyone will find out about that tomorrow. And even if we have like a snow day between now and then, it still will be in place. So, so hopefully, we're good there. And then, I'd lastly just want to give a huge shout-out to all the folks who put the Music in Our Schools Week together a couple of weeks ago. There were, there was, you know, middle school and high school chorus concert. There was a middle school and high school band and jazz band concert. They also did a really unique thing this year where they had the fifth graders from all the elementary schools visit during the school day and play with the high school band. And that was a very, very powerful experience for the fifth graders. If you saw the, of course, I can't remember the name of the piece, but if you saw the high school band concert, they, they played a song that was just very, you know, sort of moving and passionate, had lots of percussion. And that was the one that they played when they had the elementary students on the stage. They played it a couple of times, and I think it really made a huge impact. I know one first grader, first grader really well, my son, who was there, but also a bunch of others. And I think it's just, it's really great to see those connections coming back. And also, just the concerts themselves were just well-attended, well-performed. So just, you know, all the teachers that put that together, it was really incredible. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Board comments. Kristen?
Just congratulations to the valedictorian and salatorian, and thanks for all the great budget presentations tonight.
Thank you. Eunice?
Thank you. There is a wellness meeting happening this Thursday, the 23rd, and we hope to finalize our wellness policy to recommend to the board, hopefully.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alina? Anthony?
No comments.
Craig?
Following up what Matt just said, I also attended those concerts, and I was impressed with the progress that's being made. And I have to say, hats off to all the staff that are working with these students and to all the students who performed. I was especially amazed to be sitting down in the very front row when the large chorus from the high school covered the old hit song by Queen called Bohemian Rhapsody. If you're familiar with that piece, it's a rather boffo kind of composition that kind of tore up the music world at the time. And to hear them do this with a stereo effect up and down the line of all those singers, was really amazing. They put a lot of work into that piece, which we would have to do. I was very impressed. Turning to more prosaic business, we do need to convene a meeting sometime with the- Turning to more prosaic business, we do need to convene a meeting sometime with the Audit and Finance, and I think we know the schedule situations, but I'm thinking sometimes it might be helpful to have a little staff support in trying to do the communications to try to figure out exactly what the best day and time is to do some of these meetings. But as long as we're all here, I'm thinking maybe the last week of this month on a Wednesday night? Is that feasible? Be...
29?
Not this week, but...
The 29th.
The week after, on a Wednesday?
It is not for me. That's the night I was doing the South Avenue Community Conversation. I actually was gonna have Emery attend it with me, just with, because there's questions about the Capitol project and stuff, but...
Yeah, well, we don't want to step on that, but...
And Thursday's no good for you, Anthony, is that correct?
Thursday, I have my holiday renaming committee of that week. That sounded a great week for me. I'll just put it out there. I think I have something every night.
Well...
Is there a day during that...
Emery, do you have a sense of, like, timing, like, that we would have things to...
I can, we submitted all of the information for the HR review, so I can check in with the internal auditors to see if they could have a draft report in the near future, because that might be a good topic for us to discuss.
Yeah. I'd like to track back to them.
So would that be like...
It might be after...
Spring break?
After spring break. So I could get a date.
Do we want to try before a board meeting?
That works for me.
Or that, I'm not pushing that.
Well, it's possible.
It works for me, too. I mean, as long as I know in advance, I can make sure I don't have any calls scheduled after 5:00. We...
April 17?
We can't do the 17th, because we're actually, bless you, already starting the board meeting early that night to attend a small performance by the Beacon Players, for those who can make it. So...
Bless you.
Thank you, sorry.
You mean next, you're thinking about next Monday night, or what?
No.
No? April...
No, because we have a policy committee before the board meeting next Monday.
We're so busy.
Yeah. And then there is spring break in between, which no one should do committee meetings. I won't be here. So, looking at the calendar, we could do a meeting... I know that Flora also really wanted to try to get a PR meeting going. I don't know if the 19th or the 20th would work for anyone.
Monday, the what?
It's actually Wednesday or Thursday of April.
Is that for PR or for...?
For, well, I was thinking we could do both in one night, if it works for people.
And that's enough time for them to have a draft report?
Okay.
What date are you proposing?
The 19th or the 20th? Anthony?
19th or 20th of April, right?
Yes.
Well...
Or else I would propose we do one of them before the 25th board meeting.
Oh, that's right, the board meeting is on Tuesday that week. Okay. It could be available for the 20th or before the board meeting. Have a conflict on the 19th.
20th, I can make work.
You can make the 20th work?
Yeah, we have a conflict on the 25th, right?
Okay. So the 20th, Kristen, 20th?
Yeah.
Okay.
What are we talking about? Which one?
The 20th.
The 20th, Thursday, the 20th?
Thursday, the 20th.
That sounds good.
Okay, and I'm also gonna put down PRL. Who, Eunice, are you, you're on PR committee, right? Does that work for you?
Can we do seven? Or eight?
That's a Thursday.
It's a Thursday, yeah. Or actually, maybe, could you do six?
I can be, I could try to be here 6:05, 6:07. But yeah, 6...
Okay.
We're seeing audit at what time?
So audit at 7:00 and...
7:00.
And PR at 6:00, if we can?
Yeah.
If that works for people? I have to see if Flora... Wait, who's the third?
Me.
Can you do it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'll check with Flora to see if that works for her as well, but let's count on that for now.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I mean, in general, what would be great is to have these meetings, as we've all discussed, but this year is sort of, between snow days and other things, it seems like the weather happens on the days we have audit meetings, so we haven't had very many.
Probably safe on April 20th.
Yeah.
My brother's birthday is April 23rd, and he was born during a miserable snowstorm, so...
Yeah. There's no guarantees.
No guarantees. Is that all from you, Craig?
That's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Only comments I had are congratulations to the valedictorian and salatorian. We had our policy committee meeting, and there are three policies on for first read. We did table policy 5695 in order to give time for, to do a little more research about the behavioral aspect of use of personal devices. This is more a policy of definitions of what a personal device is. And we did make some progress on our diversity, equity, inclusion policy, and we're going to work on that alone at our next policy meeting, which is on the 27th at 6:00 PM. Okay. Next thing on our agenda is nomination for Dutchess County Bosse Board members. We are allowed to nominate as many people as we want to. Are there any nominations for Bosse's board member?
I would like to nominate Michael Reel.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? I would like to nominate Anquenette Hales.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was just trying to figure out where her name was. Yes.
Make it easy for you.
Her.
Are there any other nominations?
I would like to nominate...
Thomas Hurley?
Nope.
Someone else?
No, what was her, I'm sorry.
Oh, so she's already nominated?
Okay, so we don't have to do anything?
So then we vote to just make sure we have a majority of the board that's for the nomination, and then we're good to go. So that's it for nominations? Okay. All in favor of the nomination of Michael Reel?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm also in favor, passes six to zero. All in favor of the nomination of Anquenette Hales?
Aye.
I'm also in favor, passes six to zero. Congratulations, Anquenette, thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Are there any items that any board members would like to have removed from the consent agenda?
11.02, 12.01I, 2 and 3.
11 point...
Hold on, hold on. 11.02, 12.01I, and what?
It's one. It's, there's two. It's 12.01I2.
Oh, I2.
12.01I3.
23. Okay.
11.04.
11.04? Okay, can I have a motion to approve 11.01 through 15.11, less 11.04, 11.02, and 12.01I2 and I3?
So moved. Second.
Kristen, second by Eunice. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm also in favor, with gratitude for the donations, passes six to zero. Can I have a motion to approve 11.02?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alina. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I'm also, I'm in favor, passes five to one. Can I have a motion to approve 11.04?
So moved.
Craig?
Second.
Second by Alina. You're on a roll.
I'm trying.
Comments or questions?
Yes, my question is, on this policy draft, this is our first reading of the notice of meetings, and it says, "Regular and scheduled special and special meetings of the Board of Education," but it does not seem to encompass committee meetings. Is that an intentional omission or an accidental omission, or could we discuss? Seems to me that notices of committee meetings should be about the same as for meetings of the board, and normally, that's what we have done.
We did not remove committee from the language, so it was not in there to begin with.
In the past, Craig, I think it was purposely not on there, because then it restricted the amount of time that you had to give notice for the meeting, where if there's a committee meeting and you wanted to have it, like, sooner, because there was something that came up, it gave you the leniency to do so.
I see. It could be. Thank you, but I would say that there is provision for emergency notices and short-term notices as well for board meetings, which sometimes does happen, especially when we postpone it for weather, et cetera. So I don't see any reason why we couldn't encompass committee meetings there. We normally do give notice of them and put it on the calendar, and sometimes that's helpful to members of the board, trying to remember what it was they're supposed to do, as well as the general public. Once in a while, the public wants to chime in on these meetings. It doesn't happen very often, but if they don't have notice, they have no real opportunity to do it anyway, so notice is a good thing.
I tend to agree. I would be fine with adding... So Craig, I mean, would you...
Could I offer an amendment to this item?
Can we just, a little bit further before we...
Yeah.
Or do you want to put it back to committee for discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to hear people who aren't on the committee, their input, so...
I'm, I think it's practice, and I think we should do everything possible to advertise the committee meetings as we do a board meeting with the same practice. However, I don't want, I don't think that it needs to be added to the policy, so then we have to follow that policy as it's written to include the committee meetings.
Yeah, I agree.
So I think that I would be in favor of the practice and procedure to be the same. However, I would like to give the administration the autonomy, in case something comes up, that they feel they need to have that committee meeting, that, hey, it's okay, we get that, it's an emergency, but part of our practice should be to advertise it the same way as the board meeting. That's my personal thought, but...
I agree. I think that it's, I do think practice is important and making sure that we try to give as much notice as possible, but just this year, being an example, there's, I mean, I have kids living in my house, like, we've been sick nonstop, and we've had to be flexible about meetings. And even just the meeting that we had tonight, it was good to have the facilities meeting. I don't, you know, we didn't really have our agenda set, because we hadn't met in so long. You know, I feel like the committee work is certainly something that the public is welcome to, but we often report on what happens at committee in public meetings that follow a policy of notice and open meetings law. So I feel like this year is an example for all of us that we need maximum flexibility sometimes, because we can't, we can't be hamstrung by a policy.
I don't believe policies are intended to hamstring us, they're intended to guide us.
But you can't break board policy.
So what, when would you actually be breaking policy? I mean, if you have a meeting scheduled less than a week in advance, you provide or electronically transmit public notice to the extent practicable.
Craig, I'm just thinking of, like, the safety committee, right? Say that there's something happening, they want to do a, you know, they want to have a meeting to discuss what happened, and they want to pull that committee together that day.
Wait a minute, that's the safety committee, is that a committee of the board?
There's an ad hoc member to it, right? There's a member on that safety committee.
There is, but it's not a Board of Educat, this is the Board of Education.
Here's another question, doesn't this, it talks about the special meetings of the Board of Education, so I don't think that encompasses district committees or special purpose committees that are not part of the board. So the policy wouldn't really cover those things anyway.
I mean, I think that, for me, having something that, and honestly, it could be in our school board, you know, policy, like, we have the new member handbook, it could be in there, but I do think having some sort of structure as a guideline is helpful. The notice thing is also important, you know, these are meetings that are open to the public, so I don't know, and I do feel like it is sort of covered here, when a meeting is scheduled less than a week in advance, the board shall provide or electronically transmit public notice to the extent practicable. I mean, that's not a super stringent...
It's pretty easy.
Sentence there. I don't, I don't think, I mean, there's no timeline there, there's no, you know, you can't have a meeting if there's not enough time notice given. Vote it down.
Yeah.
Let's bring it to a vote. So...
Before we bring it to a vote? What am I voting on?
So you're voting on whether or not to approve this for a first read? And if it doesn't get approved as is written, then it basically goes back to the committee.
Well, I'm gonna vote against it.
You're gonna vote against it?
I'm gonna vote against this. I think it's insufficient.
Everyone's gonna vote against it for a different reason. I'm gonna vote for it, but...
Weirdly, I'm gonna vote for it, too.
So, so the, you know, I mean, do you understand what the conflict is? Basically, this doesn't, this notice of meetings, we are, we, you know, we have by law, we are to be, we have to give notice of our board meetings, by open meetings law. And the question is really whether or not to include our committee, our committees under that same umbrella, under the same rules.
Okay.
But I think the first vote was, Craig was making a motion, right, Craig, to amend?
A motion to amend? Is that in order?
Did it make it?
We were just in comments and questions.
Okay, oh, all right.
Yeah.
So right now, the policy, the committees don't fall under that?
Currently, no. I mean, we, in practice, yes. In practice, that we do, you know, when, as soon as we make a meeting, it's put on the website, you know, it is...
This was a policy developed for districts by NISBA. Right?
Mm-hmm. Yes. Yeah, so, I mean, it's fine with NISBA, you know.
That policy, when we have, that you're reading?
Yeah, this is, I mean, I don't think we changed anything in this policy. Look at, let me check the minutes.
But Craig's motion, and to have it so that the... But the...
Had committees.
Well...
If he does, then there has to be a second, and then we vote on the amendment.
To amend that, the policy, that the policy, or the committees fall under that?
To vote on what he asked to amend. And then if that passes, then we'd be voting on the amendment, but if it doesn't pass, then we'd be voting on the original.
Yeah. I am fine with the original, as it is written. I do feel like, you know, maybe it's something that we make stronger in, I mean, I would actually be okay with it being in here as well, but if it's not in here, I would like to make it stronger in our, in our personal school board handbook, is my feeling. By the way, Emery or Matt, do you know, was legal asked about defining extraordinary circumstances for this, because that was one question we had? Maybe we should table this.
I'd like to move to table this or refer it back to the policy committee. One or the other. I mean, obviously, it needs some further thought here.
I'm gonna make the recommendation that we table it, because there also was a question about if we needed to define extraordinary circumstances, so...
There's so many.
And we wanted to get legal opinion on that, so...
So then why is it on there if we're still waiting for...
I'd like to move to table this.
I thought maybe it'd pass through.
Or refer it back to the committee, or, and refer it back to the committee.
What did you think would pass through? Alina asked why, if we didn't have the answer.
Well, the, our, I mean, our lawyers do look at our agenda before a meeting, and so I think that they did pass over the, these, I mean, is that, that's typical, right, Emery and Matt, that, so without having been asked that specific question, they did go over this. But...
These are always, like, boilerplate things from NISBA, but that doesn't mean NISBA is necessarily following what we would want to follow. We can choose a higher standard if we want.
Okay, well, I am fine with tabling it, I'd like a little more time to think about it.
Okay, my motion is to table it.
Is there a second to Craig's motion?
Second.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so it's, it-
You didn't want to table it?
No.
Okay.
I don't think it needs to be.
So, the motion to table fails.
What?
I thought, I thought we were tabling it because of the, the lawyers were just gonna define special circumstances.
I mean, they do go through the agenda, so I assume that they feel that we don't need any specific definition of extraordinary circumstances, which is fine with-
I mean, I'm fine with the policy as it is, I just, I thought that's why we were tabling it.
Okay, well, the motion to table failed, so we are back at the original, um, motion. So, are there any further comments or questions about that? And now we're gonna be voting about whether or not to approve the policy as written.
It's just the first reading, though, right?
For the first read, yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, I'm also in favor, it passes five to one. Can I have a motion to approve 12.01, aye, two?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Kristen, second by Eunice, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Are you abstaining? Um, I'm in favor, passes five to zero.